And you're live.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our special evening Hall Board meeting tonight. We are here here tonight to discuss some some matters with relation with regard to the accessibility and kind of the future of the hall. We're going to have a presentation from Terry Vaschel and and just, yeah, I think I think a discussion as well about about the future of the evening hall. I'm certainly keen to hear from members of council and the mayors here. So that's great. Like to recognize them and thank them for coming tonight. And as well, of course, I see a number of a number of people from the public here, too. So that's great as well. So thank you for coming. I'll just remind everybody since I had the opportunity that our AGM will be online next Thursday evening and at 7:30 and the details for that can be found on the ClearView, ClearView website. And yeah, I would like to acknowledge, I would like to begin this meeting by acknowledging that we are on the traditional end of the Haudenosaunee, the Wendat and the and other First Nations that have been here since the time immemorial. It's something we don't do normally at Clearview Township, which I would really like to encourage Clearview Township Council to consider that to be part of your of your standing orders. We certainly do it in a lot of other in a lot of other regards. And I think it's it's something we should do for reconciliation moving forward anyhow. So thank you to to members of those communities for allowing us to come here today in a good way. The agenda that we have is I've kind of outlined it here. It's fairly fairly brief agenda. I think it'll be a fruitful discussion, though. So we have disclosure pecuniary interests and nature thereof, approval of our previous minutes, the small halls discussion, and then the next meeting would be the AGM and then the adjournment. Is there anything else that someone would like to add to the agenda? Hearing no hearing none for that. I would like to get a mover in a second or for the agenda, please, from the evening Hall Board. Melanie and Lori, thank you. And members of the Hall Board, if you could turn your cameras on and raise your hands if you are if you approve of the agenda. Thank you. And is there any opposition? Seeing none, we'll consider that carried. Thank you. And is there anybody at this point in time who would like to declare or who needs to declare pecuniary interest? Okay, Sarah?
So I just want to declare my pecuniary interest in that I do run concerts and the proceeds, be they not very big, but the proceeds go from the production side to the Creemore Echo, which is the business that I own.
Right. Thank you. Any more declarations at this point? Great. No more declarations. Okay, we will move down the agenda to approving the sort of I'm just trying to flip back and forth between screens here. The previous minutes, the minutes were from February 25th and so they were they had been sent out to the the Hall Board there. There was some discussion about the water system COVID update. We we made a resolution to, as we have for the past few months, to keep our keep the hall closed for the time being due to the pandemic. At a financial update from Karen, we passed a resolution to sorry, where am I here? Oh, yeah. Passed a resolution to council where Evening Hall directed Evening Hall Board directed me to write a letter to council stating that we would like all meetings with regards to the future of the halls to be held to be held in the public forum, not in camera. That letter was written and it was passed along to council. I haven't seen that come up. That letter come up as official communication and to be included in minutes at the council table yet, but I'm hoping that happens soon. We had an update on the heat and water system and we set the date for AGM. Is there any questions or errors or omissions from the minutes?
An update, Bill?
Mayor, yes, please.
Yes, we did. We did receive your your motion and your recommendation and council did proceed in camera and met at two occasions and the results of that meeting are the meeting that you're going to have here tonight. So I think that you can speak to your member from the the Hall Board, Mr. Lammers, if you wish, and you can confirm that this is the same material that we talked about in our in-camera session.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anything with regards to the agenda or sorry, the minutes for approval at this point? Seeing nothing else, get a mover in a second or for the minutes from February 25th. Thank you, Melanie. And a second or thank you, Lori. Oh, great. And any opposition to the the minutes? Hearing none from the Evening Hall Board, we will move on then. Consider those carried to, I believe, sorry, flipping back here to our still in the minutes to our small halls discussion. So I think at this point, we have Terry Vaschel as well as other members of, I think I saw Amanda and that lovely singing voice here as well today to give us a presentation. So is that is it appropriate this time, Terry, for you just to take it away? Or is there anything else you need from us?
That's excellent. Thanks, Bill.
Great.
And yes, you know, you mentioned Amanda. So somebody some of the Evening Hall Board members, if you all know who I am, my name is Terry Vaschel. I'm the general manager for the Parks Culture and Recreation Department. We also have Amanda Murray that's available in the background. As you all know, and also two of the members of our team being Jessica Cordier and Courtney Rogers, who the three of us have been working on this presentation that you have this evening that I'm happy to be sharing with you all as well as council's feedback towards that presentation. Couple of housekeeping items. I've been working with the six halls presentations the last couple of weeks. So I may have your hall names mixed up in my brain. So if by accident I don't say the word evening and I mention another hall name, that's just because I have all six in my brain all at once here. So I'll try to do a good job in keeping the evening name front and center. So I will be sharing my screen with you all very, very shortly. I have approximately 18 slides of information. I'm going to forewarn you right now. It's going to be information overload, but it's going to be excellent information and I find and we feel that you're going to have, you know, it's going to give you a good idea of the position that we're all in today. So yeah, so without further ado, I'll I'll share my screen. And hopefully, everything goes according to plan. Sometimes we have some technical difficulties. Do you guys see all that? Bill, I'll ask you as chair, do you see my my my? Yep, perfect. Okay. And I do see you guys as well. So before we get going, Bill, US Chair, I would have a question for you. And I'll be asking all the all the Hall Boards the same question is, would you like me to go through my presentation approximately 18 slides? And ask the members to write down your questions, even perhaps which slide number? And come back to questions at the end? Or would you prefer that I ask if folks had questions after every slide? Every every board is different. What's your preference?
Um, yeah, having, I don't, I don't really, I don't, doesn't really matter to me. I maybe in the interest of time, it might make sense to to make notes and then come back if if that's okay.
Yep, just want to make sure. Okay, excellent. So again, if you know, if you I do have your screens up. So if you do put up your hand and you have you do have a question that you want to ask right away, hopefully, I'll see you and I'll, you know, I'll start. Oh, council members, I could see him right away.
Thanks, Terry. Yeah, if you make notes and reference to the slide, then Terry can slip back to him fairly easily.
Okay, excellent. All right. Thank you, council members. Let me just put your little screen here on the side here and then let's get her going. Sorry about that, folks. Okay. So again, give me one second. I'm just getting a bit of a technical difficulty here. There we go. Very perfect. Well, I can't. I'm just going to stop sharing for one sec, folks, and then share again. Apologize for this. For some reason, I cannot see you all anymore. Well, I will just have to go with the presentation. And okay, well, that's unfortunate. Okay, so as I mentioned, this evening, we're here to present the Small Halls presentation for the Evening Hall. The presentation is made up of two parts, part one being the information provided by our department. It's going to contain all the background information. Then after part one, we'll take a quick break and then we'll have a part two, whereas we were seeking feedback from the Evening Hall Board and and presenting councils options and hopefully getting back back those options from you guys. First question we have, we want to share is how did we get here? How did we? Why are we here today in 2021 talking about AODA? So again, I'll read really quickly some highlights. The Ontario Provincial Government obviously implemented accessibility standards to help business and organizations to remove barriers, obviously to improve accessibility in five key areas. And I'll talk about those five key areas shortly. The standards are all part of the Accessibility for Ontario Disabilities Act back in 2005. The AODA has been active in Ontario since 2005. However, you know, people might be wondering, you know, what is AODA? The Accessibility for Ontario with Disabilities Act in 2005 is an Ontario law mandating that organizations must follow standards to become more accessible to people with disabilities. The goal for the province is to fully to be fully accessible by 2025. And all levels of government, private sector, non-for-profits must comply with this legislation. Some keynotes of that of those standards is one is that there's there's heavy fines. All directors and officers of corporations have a duty under subsection four, who fails to carry out that duty is guilty of a major offense. Again, there's three types of offense. There's a minor and an intermediate and a major offense. And if convicted of major offenses is liable for fines, not more than $100,000 per day. Very, very strict offenses. The second key item is that the council of every municipality, having a population not less of 10,000 people shall establish an accessibility advisory committee or continue any such committee that has established before the day this section comes into force. And finally, by January 1st, 2016, which obviously has already came and went, corporations with 50 plus employees need to make new or develop public spaces accessible. No new dates have been provided by the by the AODA Act at this point, but there is a goal to have a fully accessible Ontario by 2025. I also want to talk about some timelines that we we have set to, you know, to achieve results. So as you all know, council directed staff to begin this process, to start sharing information with the Hall Boards and making some decisions. During the budget process of 2021 this year, council decided to no longer wait and to tackle these issues and tackle these this decision for each hall starting this year. In April of 2020, that being last year, the council and township received a report from Burnside on all the AODA issues and approximate estimates for every for every hall. So that was received back in 2020. This year, February 2021, council had brainstorming sessions and came up with options to present this evening to the Evening Hall. That's where we are today. We're in March and April 2021. We will meet each individual Hall Board and perhaps even the public if council sort chooses. We're hoping to bring back the board's preferences to council via a report through our department and ultimately make final decisions. The goal is in June to September in 2021 is to start implementing decisions made by council for capital projects. Moving on. With all that being said, why are we really doing this? We think it's very important that we also share with you, the Hall Board, that the the AODA has hasn't implemented the integrated accessibility standards regulation. In 2016, five standards of the AODA were combined under the IASR. And those were the information and communications, employment, transportation, design of public spaces and customer service. So five key areas were created to meet AODA standards. The small halls, specifically the Evening Hall, meets the bottom two being the design of public spaces and customer service. Why do we need AODA? Accessibility is good for obviously both the economy and the community. The population of Ontario with disabilities is steadily growing. Accessible information and employment makes makes it possible for this growing group of people to contribute to the economy and society. Likewise, accessible transportation and public spaces ensure that people can move around their communities. Again, I've had this this last phrase in bold because I think it's extremely important. Finally, the standards of AODA give all people an equal footing as they work, play, learn, teach, buy and sell and use their diverse talents to benefit their communities and their province. So AODA is extremely important. Again, we've captured four key thought bubbles is what we're calling them, and we would like to share those as well. On the far left, people with disabilities are just like everyone else. They shop and do business with their families and friends. As our population ages, the number of people with disabilities will obviously increase. The key is that the goal date for an accessible Ontario is 2025. And again, highlighted in bold, it's not public if everyone can't use it. At this time, I would like to share with you the modified FADS requirements. So again, we're going to details a little later about what does FADS mean, but Clearview Township presently has a set of standards called FADS. And and FADS is the ClearView Minimum Standards. So sorry, ClearView Standards for AODA. But Burnside, when they were doing the report, they identified that there are some items that could be done in a modified way. On the left side here, I have captured that although presenting a range of alternates to full implementation of the FADS requirements is beyond the scope of Burnside's report, consideration could be given to phase implementation of those requirements. Again, on the bottom of this top left bubble, allow either a universal washing or accessible multi-stall washing on each floor rather than both a universal washing. So that's a standard that can be modified, which would obviously have an impact on the bottom line. A second key component would be the way the requirement to include an area of refuge at exits not located on an accessible path. So these two components have a major impact on the dollar. Again, I will show you the difference in a few slides that are coming up. Top right bubble, if the FADS requirements were modified, as described in Burnside's opinion, the reasonable construction budget for modified FADS amount for each hall would total the following. So again, I had a better table to show you a little later, but modified FADS would obviously change the the amount between both standards. On the bottom, we've also came up with what we're calling a hybrid FADS. So these are items that are in between the bare minimum building code standards as well as the Clearview Township FADS standards. We're calling those hybrid standards. We've experienced this through the while we went through the process with the Sunnydale Hall who have already created a standard for the entrance for their hall. And we realized while going through that process that there are some items that could be modified over and above the ones that are set in our standards. Again, I apologize. I for some reason, I can't see the all the board members. So I can't see if anybody has any questions at this time. I'll take a quick little 30 second or five second break. Does anybody have any questions so far? Okay, we'll move on. Some key financial information, some key financial notes to share with you all this evening. The reserve council has been setting funds aside for the last six to seven years. Presently, the reserve as of December 31st, 2020 sits at $1.266 million. This year in 2021, an additional 250,000 will be injected into that reserve, making a projected balance of 1,516,000. We further broke that number down amongst this six halls. If you break the 1.5 million dollars down, it represents approximately $252,000 for each hall. This does not include this station on the green. If we would further break that reserve down and include the station on the green, it would represent $216,000 in a reserve specifically for AODA capital items for the small halls. We also know that the cost of insurance to the municipality for all six halls combined is approximately $9,000 per year. Also, we know that the cost of financing currently is very low. It's approximately 2% for the municipality, if not lower. So perhaps it's it would be time to to borrow some money to pay for some projects. Additionally, the we know that the Clearview Township also helps the all the halls with water and sewer expenses, snow removal, grass cutting, garbage removal, promotions, staff resources, such as our finance department and our department. We don't have a fixed amount. We don't know what that number is at this point because it varies. It varies per hall and it varies on the season. But we know there is support. Also, we know that there's a solo revenue that some of the halls have that is part of their business plan. So moving on to the Burnside's estimates. So back in 2019, they had they had used contractors that specialized in these fields, historical cost data from similar projects and the current construction cost data published by RS Means Company. This is how they came up with their estimates. You can you can see on the right side, the all the halls combined. I have highlighted for you for you folks this evening, the Evening Hall, the full FADS, which is the Clearview Township's AODA standards as well as the modified FADS as explained earlier. These costs do not include inflation. And I will talk about inflation on the next slide. If you look at the Sunnydale Hall, just to clarify that component, they already received an estimate for the entrance portion of their hall only, which represents 450,000 and then 520,000 if we use the full FADS as the estimates for the additional items in the building. Again, I've captured here for you folks the the reserve. So you can kind of compare those amounts for your hall. The inflation effect, this is the sad news. The more you wait, the more expensive it gets. Unfortunately, Burnside and Associates in their report have identified the inflation being at approximately 5% per year. So if we would take the 2019 FADS and modified amounts and we would add the 5% per year, these are your new amounts. So in 2020 would be 6.8 and 4.3. If you would meet the full FADS or modified FADS standards and again, do the same amount for this year in 2021, these are your new amounts. Worth noting, these cost estimates should be used as a guide only as costs may vary according to the time of year and the quality of material used, volume of work, actual site conditions, and the new one being a pandemic. We know that the pandemic will have an effect on the cost for construction. Additionally, we know if we look into stats can four key components that represents the inflation are also noted here in the table. So the building construction price index, so stats can predict very similar to Burnside, a 5% increase per year as well. Non-residential construction price index represents a 2.8 and a 3.3 for for each year course accordingly. Also, the raw material price index, these are like your metals, your aluminum, your coppers. Stats can for 20 for the 2020 represented 13.6% and 27%. So you could see that stats can predict a significant increase in raw material. Also, wooden lumber, another one that's been highly impacted against that scan predicts a 10.2% seasonal adjusted rate and a non-seasonal up to 40% 44%. We I've actually seen in the news this week that lumber might be even higher than that today. Worth commenting, high demand for softwood lumber for construction and renovation, coupled with low production capacity over the course of the year, are mostly behind the rising prices. Again, as stated by stats can. If we take those numbers, we've provided a slide here to to show you what, you know, how this affects the evening hall as well as how it affects all the halls combined. So if on the right is the 2019 estimated amount by Burnside. On the left is the 2021 with an estimated 5% per year. Some more key financial notes. The council and Clearview Township will also have some significant significant projects to decide on moving forward. As you could see on this slide, there's approximately seven major projects that will be coming up that they will have to make a decision on. The Collingwood Street Bridge, Standard Water Servicing, Creemore Sewer Plant, the Creemore Water Solutions, Fire and Public Works Building in New Lowell and the Standard Sewer. So council has approximately $66 million of capital investments to make in the future. Now, this might not affect the taxpayers directly. Some of it may be financed or maybe there's grants available, but there's significant decisions to be made from council that is worth sharing with the Hall Boards. So again, here are some more thought bubbles that staff and council have come up with. And these represent questions that must be answered at some point in time in the future. So we will go through these thought bubbles really quickly. But you will see that these are that every decision that is being made with the small halls will have a significant impact on the community and on other items in the future. So first one top left, first question that would have to be answered is do the Hall Board's volunteers want to commit for another five to 10 years of managing and fundraising for for their halls? Like I said, that question will be answered at some point in time. Next one down, if volunteers do not want to commit to their hall, does council want to keep the buildings and or direct another department to manage those buildings? So if the volunteers bail or they don't, they no longer want to be involved, what does council do with those buildings? Third, does existing economy of the boards still work for the Hall Boards? The existing setup, is it still functional? Does it still work for both the township and the volunteers? Fourth, should the existing role of the township change with operating community halls? Fifth, second row, is the existing usage of the halls meeting our residences' needs? Example, private function, private functions versus public program. Next, how will council decide between the bad standards or the modified standards? Is it council policy? Will the Hall Board's input have input or have a preference? Will it be financial impact? What will impact council's decision? Next, how does the growth in standard Creemore affect events and programming in other smaller communities within Clearview? So the more the the major halls in the major centers such as Standard Creemore, if they get busier, how will that impact the small halls? Next, this council just provided a lump sum of money to the Hall Boards to handle the AODA requirements themselves. Middle row. Middle row, does council want to repurpose existing buildings? Does it meet existing township strategies? Is it, do they explore other opportunities with them? Next, do large investments in smaller hamlets provide value to that community? Is it a priority? Does it provide value and or provide benefits to local residents? In other words, if if council and a township was to spend a million dollars in a hall, is that a priority? Or should the money be invested elsewhere? Definitely a question that council has to answer. Next, will it impact the community if one settlement loses a hall, but another others are retained and invested in? What does that look like? On the bottom middle row, grant availability. How does that look like post COVID nineteen pandemic? Will there be grants available to assist with A O D A? Capital projects for communities. Fourth row. Contractors may not even be available for twenty twenty one due to due to the COVID nineteen. And how does that affect our budgets and our timelines? We know that contractors in construction have had a minimal impact due to construction, due to the pandemic. They've been busy and from what I understand, they may not even be available in twenty twenty one. How will that affect our budgets and of course the inflation? Next thought bubble, what are other renovations that are required by the halls that are not A O D A within the next five to ten years? We know that our halls are getting older. Maybe there are other items, roofs, leakage in the basements. And who will pay for those items? Do the halls have the funds for those or will the township cover that? Next, we also found out that all the kitchens in all six halls presently do not meet fire code standards. And will council, will they do they want to include those in the upgrades? And I'll explain that a little further in some other slides that I have. Again, fundraising fatigue. We know that there are extensive fundraising programs going on in our township, in our area. Being the new standard library. The curling rinks who are fundraising for their A O D A requirements. Also, the local hospital, just to name a few. How successful will we all be in fundraising for our projects? Final row, what impact will council's decision have on the future of the Small Halls Festival? Next, station on the green A O D A and kitchen requirements. They too do not meet the FAD standards. Does council want to invest in that building as well to meet the FADS standards of today? Finally, are the halls currently in a positive financial situation? Has COVID impacted their finances? As we know, most of our halls have been closed since last year. And what impact has that have on your bottom line? Moving forward, some key factors that council had to decide upon. And these ultimately will produce the all the options that I will present a little later. First, first question we asked council during the brainstorming session was, is the status quo an option? Do we just leave it like it is today and just don't do anything? What does that look like? If council would choose yes, and then for which halls, which halls do they just leave it as is? And what will be the cost of the A O D A one to ten years in the future and potential fines? And if no, if status quo is not an option, does council and the hall boards proceed? Sorry, then the council and the hall boards would proceed with the brainstorming and planning slides of twenty. Second, does Clearview Township require nine community centers? Seven plus two, seven small halls and the two at their local community centers. Is it required as part of their township strategy plan? If no, does the township dispose of existing buildings? And what is that exit strategy? And I will talk about that in slide seventeen. Again, moving down, if no, what happens to the existing reserve? What is the appraised value of a of a building? And finally, do buildings have a residual residual value to invest in other community projects? If if council decides that, yes, nine community centers are required. Then we proceed to the brainstorming and planning session together on slide twenty. Again. Part of that process is do they renovate or just replace with a brand new building? Or sustainability, how will the buildings be kept up in the future after this significant A O D A investment? And finally, if yes, how are halls operations affected during renovations? So how how will this impact user groups in other clear view facilities? How will how will it be mitigated? Will there be price matching, service matching? And finally, do we have individual M U's with the hall boards? So this last last thought bubble means that, you know, it may take up to a year to renovate a hall. How will that impact the other halls? So for example, if the evening hall has a booking and obviously, you know, it's under construction. Will that rate be honored at other halls? And the service that the evening hall provides, will it be matched at other halls? And that's what that kind of means. Moving forward, other key factors for council to decide if township proceeds with renovations. Third, do we use a full fat standards, the modified or the hybrid? If we do, do we only pay for the A O D A items identified in Burnside for each hall? Does the A O D A renovations include the kitchen and all other items, example wishlist items? And are the kitchen fire code requirements included in those renovations? Some very important questions. Fourth, how does township pay for these renovations? What's that funding model? What does that look like? Will there be financing, fundraising? We know we have a reserve, so obviously reserves would be used and grants. How much funds do the halls have to provide towards A O D A renovations? Is it, is there a flat amount or a percentage of project cost? So in other words, if council is looking for a commitment from the hall boards. How much would you provide? Is it would just be a flat amount, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, or is it a percentage, five percent, ten percent, twenty five, fifty? And next, what funding mechanism does a township use for a possible future fundraising shortfall? So what happens if unfortunately, the hall's commitment falls through? How does council cover that cost, cover the shortfall? Finally, fifth. Does council conduct public consultations? How do and how would they measure community support? So does council go out to the public and get their feedback and get their thoughts? If yes, what are the questions that we should ask the public? And what does council want to know? Again, if yes, what method does a township utilize to gather information during COVID nineteen? Do we have hall chair meetings? Do we conduct public meetings at each hall? Do we conduct surveys? And again, if no. Then it does council want to make decisions on behalf of the public and the hall boards. This is a slide that I added at the last minute with discussions with Bill. We also were aware that in twenty fifteen, the evening hall had a design that was made. So what we catch, what we've captured here today is the difference in the standards of twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen. So on the left side bubble, you will see it's some items in the twenty fifteen design that was conducted. It was impacted by the current Ontario Building Code barrier free A O D A requirements. And this was provided by R G Burnside. So these are some items that has changed in twenty nineteen versus twenty fifteen. First one, the vestibule size of the side entry is undersized. There's also the clear space at the upper end of the ramp is undersized. Exterior barrier free walkway is not designed. Power door operators, we were not present for the universal washings. And finally, not all bathroom hardware meets current barrier free requirements. Example, barrier barrier free urinals. These are approximately five items that Burnside captured that were different in the standards between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen. Also, during the council brainstorming session, one of the counselors brought up the septic sewer system. And again, I think I've had some some discussions with Bill as well about the existing septic system for the evening hall. So what are the anticipated septic system sewer requirements? Has a recent quote been explored? Do we know what that amount is? And what are the timelines and lifespan for the existing septic system, a sewer system? So we will be looking for the evening halls feedback on that as well. Oh, I think I might have heard somebody. Again, I apologize, I, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Terry, do you want comment on that now or do you want to want to wait?
Yeah, I apologize because I can't see you guys right now, so it's a little little rare for me, but we'll come back to that slide. Bill, that's okay. Awesome. Again, moving on, A O D A compliance, if the municipality does not own the building. This question has come up quite frequently and we thought we would share some pertinent information. So what happens if the municipality doesn't own the building? What happens if somebody else does, the private sector, non for profit organization, a new a new corporation? We know that first, all major renovations must meet at a bare minimum the Ontario Building Code. Or what we're referencing to as modified FAD standards. This is for any organization that serves in the public in Ontario. We also know that the completion timeframes may be different. However, we have passed the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen completion dates set by the province of Ontario for any type of organization. So the province of Ontario had set a twenty sixteen, twenty seven date. We've already passed that, but maybe those timeframes are a little difference between a municipality and the private sector. Third, the renovations may be cheaper for the private sector or non for profit corporation. As they may go through their own procurement process. And they may include items such as volunteer work, contractor donations. Selecting their own neighbors as their contractor contractors, et cetera. The municipality through its procurement process are cannot go through that similar process. So perhaps the renovations may be cheaper. Fourth, there are slightly different operating requirements for private and non for profits operations with fifty or less employees. So the 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 code and the the capital construction, there is no difference. But there is a slight operating difference between both organizations. First one is the employment standards are a little different. Providing information and communication is a little different between both. The accessibility policies are different and finally, the training programs are different. But these are all mainly operating requirements, not capital construction requirements. And finally, there are no access, there's no accessibility advisory committee is required for the private sector. Only for public, only for, sorry, for corporations that have fifty employees or more. Moving on. Again, major council decisions, what is the criteria to renovate? So if council and the hall boards decide to renovate when their hall, in which order do the halls get renovated? Is it one at a time? Or is it all at once and perhaps just some potential savings with one major tender? Is it engineered designs ready to go halls? Do they go first? Is it least costly to the most costly or vice versa? Is it a public process, RFP or tender or RFQ for all or individual halls? And again, do they include in kind donations? And is in house renovations allowed? On the right. Who will ultimately manage those that construction? What is the role of the hall board throughout that process? Do we, is there a requirement for an M O U between the township and the hall board during construction? Who approves the final specifications? Are each hall on their own for the construction? Does a township hire a project manager on contract specifically? Specifically if it's for one tender for all six halls. What are the insurance constraints during the construction? And finally, who is responsible for ensuring work is completed and to what standing? Again, some very key questions that needs to be answered. This slide here is with respect to the standard for ventilation control and fire protection of commercial cooking operations. As I mentioned earlier, on all six of our halls presently do not meet the NFPA standards for ventilation. You'll note on the left, we've quoted two subsections. Two point one point two, which applies to all buildings that are classified as a major occupancy. Which means any structure used or intended for this for supporting or sheltering any use or occupancy. Which community halls, which are community halls are defined as group A division two. Two point six point one point twelve states that a cooking operation that produces smoke or grease laden vapors. Shall be provided with an exhaust system and fire protection system in accordance with the NFPA ninety six. Which means standard for ventilation control and fire protection of commercial cooking cooking operations. To the far right, I've captured, I've captured some pictures to show you what those ventilation systems look like. In the middle, we've we have determined that is a total estimate amount to update. The existing cooking operations in the six halls represents approximately twenty thousand dollars per hall. Or a hundred and twenty thousand for all six halls combined. An exit strategy. So what happens if if council would sell one of the halls? What does that look like? Or if it's sold to the hall board themselves? Would would community halls be given or sold to the volunteer boards? Will this solve the A O D A issues? Would the renovations be cheaper? We think it may, but it's a question that needs to be answered. The board would need to become incorporated body to protect the volunteers, we know this. And who would pay for this? Would there be township support? What other support can a township provide to a hall board that owns the building? Taxes, grants or operational funding, water and sewer expensive. Would the solar revenue be rolled over, snow removal, grass cutting, garbage, promotions, staff resources, would that still be in play? And what would be the length of time of that support? Approximately one to five years. A new incorporated hall board's responsibility will obviously change from what they are today. This would include their own financial operations. You would have to manage their liability, operating capital costs, taxes, so can regulations. Events and alcohol regulations, health and safety inspections. All these items are presently presently being managed by the township. And obviously, a new incorporated hall board would be responsible for those. And what would happen if the property is sold within a few years? Is there a first rate of refusal for X amount of years for the township? That's it for my presentation. I'm just going to stop sharing my screen and hopefully I can see you folks. There you are. Hopefully, they put everybody to sleep. For some reason, like I said, I'm having a bit of a technical difficulty when I share my screen, I can't. I can't see you guys anymore, it just goes right off my screen. So I'm going to try to fix that in the background. But so that's part A, part one, Bill. If anybody has any questions or require clarification, when I've provided. Part B will be council's proposed options. So council, like I said, council went through this whole exercise through all this information. And they've come up with some options to present to the evening hall board for your consideration. Also, I will also go through the what needs to be done as per Burnside's report. We've obviously shared this report with you folks in the past, but I'll go through with it in detail so you can understand. Where the one point five million to one point seven million dollars will be spent.
Okay, so thank you, Terry. Just so we're, I guess, because you know, we're maybe in a bit of a different. A different place than other halls, I I I think because of the the history with the development of. Of a plan to tackle some of these issues, a lot of the issues you you had talked about. And you referenced that, do you want to, can we go back to that slide? I didn't write down all the points, but there was a few points I thought that were addressed. And I'm just curious for more information on some of those.
Sure, yes, which slide would you like me to go to, Bill?
It was the one. It was the one um, that had the twenty fifteen uh, items from the the renovation that were no longer.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't understand.
Didn't write. I didn't. I couldn't see the number. So I'll just.
And on the problem is right.
That's it here. Yeah, I think thirteen. Thirteen or fifteen. Yeah.
There. Oh. Technical difficulties. I apologize, folks. There, there we go. Can you see that?
Yep. Okay, so, um. I had thought that powered doors were on the um, were on the drawing. Um, and I had, there was also on those drawings too. There was a proposal to add a second entryway. Um. It slightly east of the of the current side entryway. Um, that would be uh, that would be properly sized, I believe, is it? There was a thirty to be a thirty-six inch door or something like that. I'd have to look at the drawings again. Um. I can't. I don't know about the the space at the upper end of the ramp. But yeah, so there's uh, the septic system was definitely part of that was part of that uh, that drawing package, I know for sure. Um, and um, and the water system, uh, I believe there was a going to be a new water line brought in as well.
Okay.
Think. Um, so those were just a few kind of notes. So I don't know. Um. Yeah, I don't know if you if you have any comment on that, but there there were certainly a bunch of things. There's a few things there that I thought that maybe um, were. Were okay.
Um, right. Um, so so that's what I have here, Bill. This is, you know, I'm relying on RG Burnside. Um, I don't know if they've looked at those additional items that you were you were just mentioning. Um, we've asked them just to look at the A O D A requirements. Um, so I don't know if the septic system or the water lines were were looked at or included. Um, but we've asked them just to look at the difference between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen with respect to the interior building code. Uh, for the A O D A requirements only.
Oh, so they're just looking at the requirements, not necessarily with reference to the drawings.
Correct. Oh, they referenced the draw, the reference of the A O D A requirements of twenty fifteen.
Right.
Um, but yeah, but not the additional items.
Okay, so they haven't gone specifically back to say our drawings and and measured the size of the the turnaround size at the top of the proposed ramp. To see if it met the twenty nineteen standard versus the twenty fifteen standard.
Correct.
Oh, okay, I see. I see. Sorry.
Yeah.
I thought I thought that your comment was saying that our, these were, these were specifically items that were that. Um, where are where the drawings that were developed did not meet.
Right, no, no, they compared both standards from both years.
I see.
Yeah. So as they would, you know, create new designs, um, they were taken to effect the twenty nineteen standards, or actually even twenty twenty standards. Um, and not go back to the twenty fifteen turn radiuses and, you know, Latin platforms. They would use today's standards.
Sure. Okay. Any any further questions for Terry on the the presentation we just saw, folks? Oh, Laurie, yeah, go ahead.
Hello.
Hello. Um, one of these questions may be addressed in the next portion. But um, and we couldn't see the numbers on your slides. So sorry, I couldn't write down what number it was. Um, but one of the slides talked about grants and whether grants would be available post pandemic. Um, so, and I can't remember now when this all first started two thousand and fifteen. Have have we? Did the county township reach out at two in two thousand and fifteen or since then in regarding grants? Or is this the first time we're asking about grants is one of my questions? And then my other question, and I maybe just haven't been paying attention, but. Um, one of the earlier slides with other projected projects that the township is looking at talked about the Collingwood Street Bridge. Is that the same bridge that was worked on five to seven years ago and we're putting in another three point five million or is this a different bridge?
Okay, thanks, Laurie. Um, so the first question with respect to grants, I will either let councillor Leishman or councillor measures, because I know they've both been active in that process. Um, and then I'll let councillor, sorry, mayor measures answer that the bridge question as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Laurie, and certainly councillor Leishman knows uh, uh, part of this answer and I'll I'll share it. We have been uh, engaged with um, the ministry. Uh, several times to speak to Minister Raymond Cho. He is the Minister of Seniors and Accessibility for the province of Ontario. Um, I have met with him twice myself. I know that my predecessor, Mayor Vander Cruz, also met with him. And spoke about small halls and and how A O D A is critically important to us. And we have asked those questions, uh, whether there would be any uh, granting opportunities or whether. A O D A would qualify under infrastructure grants, uh, you know, work for A O D A and community halls. And so. I'm I'm sorry to tell you, but we have not had any real positive answers that there would be any grant monies available. Uh, I can assure you that just as recently as this spring, I was invited to a budget session with the province of Ontario where I sat with. Another minister, he's actually Stan Cho, who's with the Minister of Finance. And uh, that minister Cho and his team, I expressed to him that that would be a very important thing for. The province of Ontario to look at is to create a granting program. So that public buildings owned by public municipalities or public entities. Would have opportunity to apply for grant funding to support renovations. Given that, as Terry lined up for you here, is outlined is the. Um, the deadline is quickly approaching, isn't it? Twenty twenty-five. And so. Um, the province hasn't developed their new budget yet. We haven't heard back. Um. We're hopeful. Uh, I'll go to councillor Leishman because if you guys recall councillor Leishman raised a bit of uh. Raise raise some eyebrows by standing up at a microphone at one of our conventions recently. And uh, we're all very proud of the work you do there for us councillor Leishman. So maybe you want to comment on that?
Well, I'm not sure there's much to comment. You pretty much shot me down. Um, he really didn't answer it, and I don't even think he knew what I was asking, quite frankly. It was, he was very confused at that day. I I got a reply later on though, uh, which basically was fairly negative and said that, no, there isn't any grants. But thank you for asking the question and great. Anyway, so that's sort of where it was at. Um, whether something comes up, I don't know. And and the grants that I've seen coming out or the possibilities are pretty small. For any kind of renovations or anything. So, you know, who knows, maybe. After we get through the pandemic expenses, they might find a bit of money somewhere. Who knows? Hopefully, cross your fingers.
Thanks, Bonnie. Um, so. We've tried. We've asked. The pandemic is is basically taking the wind out of everything. And uh, we're um, we're hopeful. Um, the one positive thing is that the municipality has continued to put money into a reserve account for all of our uh, all of our halls. And that does continue to grow. And uh, other municipalities didn't do that. We did. Um, and so we're. At least we have something to start with. And if there is a grant application come forward, we do have those funds that we could use to support that grant. Because oftentimes, uh, Terry, when grants come out, right, there's a percentage for, you know, the municipality puts in thirty percent and. The other levels the government puts in thirty-five percent or something like that. So there's a. At least there's an opportunity for us to have a little bit of funding available that we could use. We don't get any grants whatsoever. Um, the entire project, of course, will be funded by taxpayers' dollars. Because there is no uh, funds available from any other municipal sources such as development charges. Uh, it's not part of this uh, this equation. And um, those straight, straight up taxpayers money. Hope that helps, Laurie. Sorry.
You want to? Did you want to answer the the bridge question?
Oh, sure. Uh, yeah, it. Okay, so the Collingwood Street Bridge, there's actually two projects. The first one was run by the County of Simcoe, and that's the bridge that has the the arches on it and and we restored the the county restored the bridge. However, that then uh, brought to attention that the next culvert that's north or south of there, actually, the next culvert south. Um. It it's it's needs to be repaired and needs to be replaced. And so unfortunately, that's about a three point five million dollar engineering project. Um, it doesn't directly affect this board or this discussion, or even the recreation department for that matter. Again, the good news is is Clearview Township has been putting money aside in reserves for many, many years. And so our road reserve has some funds available. Uh, one of the difficulties in Clearview, when it comes to bridges, though, is we have some seventy-five bridge structures across Clearview Township. Of which most of them were built in the forties, so they're all getting old. And so we very slowly and, you know, we get them done. Every summer, you'll see a little. Cover job being done somewhere or bridge structure being put in and uh, they can cost anywhere from seven hundred and fifty thousand to three and a half million. So that one at south of uh, or the one that's called the Collingwood Street Bridge, we call it. Is currently estimated around three point five million dollars.
Thank you.
And Laurie, if I can add very quickly on the grants, um, you know, we know, we we apply for grants all the time. And what we're starting to see now post COVID, you know, we're actually still in it, but post COVID is. The emphasis seems to be more on the outdoor um, projects, outdoor renovations versus the indoor. You know, the province wants to get folks outside more, and so we're seeing more of a trend towards outdoor uh, projects or products than indoor. Just to add.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. It gives a very, um. It really gives us an idea of the costs and expenses of the halls. I'm just wondering on the other side of the balance sheet, what is the assessment on the value of the halls? Both, you know, physically, the properties and then value to the community. Has that been assessed? Maybe that's coming up in the next set of slides. I don't know. But um, that's of key interest, I think, um, to me as a hall board member, and I'm sure to uh, council as decision makers.
Now, thanks, Sarah. Now, the that assessment has not been done yet. Um, either, you know, what the buildings or what the land is worth. Um, or even the value, if you said, um, you know, from for the municipality's perspective. Um, we they haven't, council hasn't went down that road yet. You know, they're still in the process of, uh, the goal is to is to renovate them. Um, but the evaluations have not been done yet at this time.
Is that something that you'll be looking at as part of the decision-making process?
Um, you know, if I can, if I can answer that on behalf of council, I we assume they would, you know. Um, if a building was to be sold off or, um, you know, um, you know, put on the market, then I'm sure that evaluation would be made. But um, if a hall will be renovated, then there's probably now and I need to do that evaluation at that time, right? If we're going to, if we're going to renovate the evening hall. Um, you know, maybe an evaluation can be done after it's renovated and you can get an updated value at that point.
And in terms of the softer value to community, um. Oh, that's a handy, a handy sign there, Barry. Yeah, the softer values to community. I'm just wondering how, um, you know, how that will be illustrated throughout this process.
Well, if I can answer. There's a great job bringing the the numbers, the uh, long list of uh. Thought bubbles that you saw with multiple questions and difficult questions. So. Um, this particular question about the actual intrinsic value of the building or the community value of the building. Uh, that was one of the thought bubbles in there was just sort of slightly mentioned. But it is a, uh, it is a question for sure. And uh, there's no doubt in my mind and no doubt in anybody who's on this screen knows that you hear from the community how they feel about these things. And that's the community value. And so we haven't got any quantifiable number on community value. Because that's obviously a pretty difficult thing to put an actual number on. But it's um, it's it's very evident to council. That's why we've taken a. Great steps to do this process, to ask some of these difficult questions and and to have these. Honest discussions with everybody about what this project potentially can cost. Both in financially as well as to the community. Because if we answer some of those questions by giving a building for sale or. Or turn it into, as Terry suggested, another use, you know, we could move it to another department. And it not be in a recreation department, and it wouldn't be a hall board. It wouldn't be used in a community purpose. It could be. Anything that a municipality might want to use it for, but you know, that that's one of the options that are available to the municipality. So. Anyway, I I I'm sorry, Sarah, I can't answer that question. It's uh, if you could answer it for me, what is the entity value of the building, right?
Well, yeah.
Deputy Mayor would like to, would like to speak.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all. And thank you all for attending this meeting. And just so you know, that that county has presented us with these cards. Are you voting? No? Are you voting yes? Or do you wish to speak? So that's how we deal with our county meetings and our our, we've got thirty-two members trying to speak at the same time. So that's why you have these cards. That said, so I wonder, Terry, if you could just clarify for the committee. We talked about if 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 the committee was decided, and these are ifs. If the committee decided they would like to retain ownership as a as a nonprofit organization. And they retained ownership of the building and when there's an agreement with the, you know, with township to transfer ownership over to them. Now, my understanding is they don't have to meet all these FADS requirements or is that correct? And could you just clarify that? So they could, if they could take over the building, if it was. And I'm just going to, you know, same. So the township says here, you can have it for a dollar, but your building, you do what you want with it. Then they would not have to do the FADS, but they could still continue to operate it without all the, you know, regulations and everything. Could you just sort of clarify that for us, just so they understand?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. So again, it's a question that um, the previous hall board was asking as well. Um, you know, on Tuesday night. Um, so from a, from a building standards perspective. Um, it is the same for a municipality. I think I referenced it in one of my slides as well. I could probably go back that slide, but um, the the capital requirements are the same. Um, but um, again, the FAD standards is clear of your townships over and above. You know, construction standards, um, and then the modified is the um, bare minimum, it's the building code. So um, if the evening hall um, would own the building, they still would need to meet the. Building code or modified FADS standards. Um, there's no difference from a, from a, from a that perspective. Um, if I cannot, can I go back to that slide just to kind of show you what I meant by that? Is that okay? Um, and also, um, Deputy Mayor Burton, there's a few questions you have that I'll be answering on the next couple of part two as well.
Well, I if I can interrupt you for a sec, just. So while you're going through this year, and I heard what you just said, if it was a non-private. But but I understood in in the slides I saw that if it's privately owned. So defines me the difference between privately owned versus uh, owned by a nonprofit organization. Like, because I, and and because I truly understood that it was privately owned, you didn't have to follow any of the regulations. If it was privately owned by person A, they could operate it and not have to do all the alterations that. If they have to do alterations, they have to meet. But if they don't do alterations, they can continue as they are. Yeah. So that's can can you sort of, I'm sorry to to jump in there, but I just want to clarify so that the committee totally understands.
Yep. Not a problem. Um, so yeah, so privately owned, if you're referring to like, you know, one person, one, you know, one guy owning it. Um, owning a building but not using it to serve the public. So if somebody was to buy a hall and turn it into the residence or to apartments, uh, they would definitely have different regulations and standards to follow. If a private organization or a non-for-profit was to take over the hall. But they were, you use it for the same intended use, which is a public hall for customer service. Um, it must still meet the the billing code standards. Um, and same goes for the municipality. They still all have to meet the same standards. It's more on the operation sides where things get a little different. Um, as I mentioned in one of my slides, the training, the no need for a committee, this the operating side is different. But from a building perspective, if you're going to serve the public, um, everybody must meet the same code. I hope that answered the question.
And one final question. So. So if it's private, it was owned by a corporation. That I got, and I purposely wrote this down, renovations would require that they meet the A O D A. You know, uh, minimum FAB standards. What if there are no renovations? What if they, whatever they saw, there are no renovations and they use it as it is? What's the scenario then?
Uh, that's uh, that's hard for me to answer, Deputy Mayor Burton, because the province is um, they they put rules in place. They want to have an accessibility, an interior, an accessibility Ontario by twenty twenty-five. Um, so in my professional opinion, um, those renovations would still need to be done by twenty twenty-five. Um so in my professional opinion, um those renovations would still need to be done by twenty twenty-five. I mean, you know, folks can choose not to renovate and deal with the consequences at that point. Um you know, they've, the province of Ontario wanted us to all be, these halls be done by twenty sixteen. And obviously, they're not. Um we're a little bit into overtime right now. Um so what would happen if we're into twenty thirty and there's still no renovations? I can answer that. I'm not sure. But the province is promoting that all the halls, um all public facilities be accessible by twenty twenty-five.
So i- if I may pull up with with that, and I'm sorry, uh committee, for asking all these questions. So I maybe you can find out the answer to that for for this committee, because if it if it was turned over to the committee, you know, and township made an arrangement, you know, whatever that arrangement was, for a nonprofit organization to do it, and and because it talks about, clearly, it says, if you do renovations. And 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 so I'm really curious to know, if you don't do renovations, are you still forced to meet those standards? Maybe you could look into that forcing it back to us, because I might see that as an option for for this committee where they take possession of it and they don't have to do the renovations and they can continue on operating as they are. I don't know, but I'm 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 asking you, you know, to maybe dig a little further and and answer those questions.
Well, if I can support with this comment, Terry. Thanks, Bill. I had a conversation today with uh uh an architect and uh he advised me that um the Ontario Building Code, while it is a very robust document and has some very strict uh regulations, um in his opinion, was not uh really very helpful when it comes to meeting all the AODA standards in old buildings. He said it's very, very good when you're building a brand-new building. Really, you know, it's very good. Um and that is why the building code is is kind of unique. Well, the standards in Ontario are that an old building, based on the date that it was built, has to meet that code. It then has to meet fire codes that move that, you know, continue on if you want to continue to be open. So your storefront in your store, if you own a building, has to have fire codes that has to meet, but it according to the building code, it has to meet the code from when the building was built. So there's there's and then the whole question of accessibility and public use comes into play. And so this architect friend that I spoke to commented to me that it's um that's that's the trick, is that it's public use, public space, you're bringing the public into your into your space. And so it has to meet all of the AODA standards that are available. So washrooms, ramps, lights, signage, tactiles, all that. If you do a renovation, it's called a major renovation. Terry, I believe in your slide, you used the word major renovation. Uh that's the key. It's a major renovation, it has to meet all those requirements. And so therein lies kind of the difficult. To to Barry's point, if the building was turned into somebody's private residence, we would never have this discussion, because you can renovate it for your private use. There you go. But it's the public access point of it um that makes the hall what it is today, which also speaks to what Sarah was saying about it being important to our community, because it's public access spaces. Okay. I know Terry's got lots more slides on these very good topics. So thanks, you, Bill.
Thanks. Um I I did have a question, actually. I was reminded um during that little series there about the um and I haven't been into the Stainer Arena uh Community Center since the uh the library renovation. But I'm just curious as to what, because you had referenced, you know, like I'm a little bit more familiar with the uh with the Creemore um Arena uh Community Center. You know, like, uh there's talk of for lack of a better word, and forgive the forgive it, but mothballing kind of is one of the options of the 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 small halls in inside. It's one of the, you know, it's one of the, it's one of the things that could happen potentially. Um that's kind of what anyways. So you know, if if the if those arena halls, I don't know how how much they are used, if there's a, you know, transition of those facilities, or how much are they used? Are they part of this? Yeah, because I don't I know they don't have boards. If I'm, I maybe the library does now. Um but yeah, if you could just speak to those.
I'll do my best. Yeah, I'll do my best, Bill. Um yeah, so both the Creemore um Community Center and the Stainer Community Center have halls, have community halls. Uh the one in Stainer is a little bigger than the one in Creemore. Uh they do presently meet um the AODA requirements. Um they're not managed by boards, they're managed by the department, which is my department. Um and they presently meet the AODA standards. Um you know, they're they're one one floor only, there's no basement, no stairs. Uh in both, you just, you know, um they have all the mechanicals that are already been attached. We have actually since um added more accessibility accessible features to them, such as automatic sliding doors. So now, you know, folks don't have to push buttons and grab doors, the doors automatically open. And we've added those to our facilities as well. Um we continue to add minor renovations to both halls and both facilities as they as as the as ideas and technology improves. Um but uh right now, both both those halls are still being used as halls. Uh they are fully accessible and they're both fairly busy. Stainer more than Creemore, mind you, but both of those halls get used quite frequently. I would even I would even go so far, again, pre-COVID, um I would even say that the the Stainer Community Hall is I'm pretty much booked to capacity, like it's fully booked uh during the day, four to five days a week. Pretty busy.
Okay, perfect. I have um Monica next, and then I saw you raise a card to Council Leishman.
Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna bring it back to grants, if that's okay. Um I'm just wondering if there's a I know that back back when we were first approaching this uh AODA ADOA, sorry, um renovations, uh I had I had asked about grants and and we had uh kind of uh once we came under more under the brand, the umbrella of the township, uh it seemed like we we couldn't apply for them as individual halls that we needed to go through the town. But I know that Gary, one of our our members, uh had had uh mentioned um possible grant money through the military and it being a heritage building through the military and any of those other heritage grants that are kind of out there for these heritage buildings. I'm just wondering if there are limitations being under the township versus being a nonprofit organization that owns the bill. Like, are there more opportunities or less opportunities for grants that way?
Ooh, that is a very good question, Monica. Um unfortunately, I don't have that answer. I I don't know. I know if somebody else has an answer, but I don't know the difference between um you know, the heritage grants and the, you know, call them other grants, that, you know, other community grants that are available. Uh I apologize, Monica. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if somebody else has an answer, but that's a very good question.
Thanks. Thanks, Monica. Yeah, I'm Gary has been investigating, um because the building was originally a hangar uh at Edenville, um and part of the barracks in the Second World War. Um that uh that he's been investigating that through um his channels within the Canadian military. I I don't think, we don't have anything concrete um at this point. But I know he's been investigating it. Did you have a point to raise on this, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I've had experience dealing with historical sites, as you know, the Collingwood Bridge. And so um that that's an avenue that I think you could explore. Uh the 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 reality is that, you know, we would have to put a motion forward at council to declare the building a heritage building. And and I would assume we would be reasonably successful at doing that. But if we declared a heritage building, then then you could apply to uh uh the heritage, the Ontario heritage, I forget the the name of the exact, you know, or or the federal, either or. There's heritage ministries, and you could apply for funding at that stage, but we would have to declare it a heritage building first, the municipality, which is doable. So it may be an option worth looking at. But uh my experience with with uh, you know, the Collingwood Street Bridge and heritage, it's it's like, yeah. Um it it's a possibility. It's a possibility. We we have to go through the process, though, of declaring it a heritage structure and then see if they're willing to support. If it's not a heritage structure, you're not going to get any money. If it has not been declared heritage structure, so that would be the first priority. And I'd be happy to take a motion forward to council to support that, if that's what this committee wanted to do.
Thank you, Barry.
No, with your permission, I I do have a few more slides to present. Um it may answer some more questions that folks may have. Um because, you know, I was hoping to just have a quick discussion, but there's a lot of these questions, I think, um you know, are referenced in the next couple of slides, just to know.
Okay. Counsel Leishman had her had her card up there. Did you? Did you want to contribute something there, Connie?
I was just going to offer Sarah a little um tidbit. If if you're asking about the community, the soft uh value and the community value, I think that's something that you as a hall board should tell us. What is the community value? Is it valuable to your community, or do you not see it being used very much anymore? And I think I know the answer to evenings, but um I think that's something you have to tell us. Is that is that fair?
I I do I do think it's fair. I think having um I think I talked to to, we've talked about this a few times, but just really understanding some of the information that you would like um at council and uh and with your staff. Um we can gather it um certainly, but if we have an understanding of all the different elements that you need to understand, we'll get that information for you, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh yeah, please uh please continue, Terry.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Again, I'm going to share my screen. I've done a few tweaks, so hopefully I can see you folks now when I'm talking. It's kind of weird when you're talking to your screen, making a presentation on your own, but I'll try it again.
Try teaching.
Good point. Again, apologize. Can you guys see see my my screen? Again, I can't I can't see you.
Yes, yes, we can see it. Yeah.
Perfect. I don't understand why my computer did this, but all right. So moving on, a couple more slides to share with you. Um so with all the information that we've provided you uh this evening, um and again, part of the brainstorming session with council, um council came up, um so you know, we came up with some options to present to the evening board. So before we go there, I just wanted to show you, uh I've captured this slide out of the Burnside Report. Um and it spells out what what would what they recommend uh should be done to the evening hall to meet AODA FAD standards. So these are the FAD standards, these are not the modified FADS. Um again, modified FADS is, you know, only one washroom, as I mentioned earlier, but these are FADS requirements. Um so on the top uh part here, I've captured, you know, the twenty nineteen estimates and the twenty twenty-one estimates, you can see bottom right side, um this is the table that was produced by Burnside's identifying, um you know, approximately, you know, twelve key items of where the one point five million dollars would be spent. Um so you can see that here in the in the table. Um I'll just read very quickly, if you don't mind, um exactly what needs to be done to the evening hall uh to meet the current AODA standards. Um so on the east and south wraparound addition, uh Burnside recommended that we construct a two-story addition um at the east rear and south elevations of the building that will contain a universal washroom and a male and female accessible multi-stall washroom on each floor. Again, those are FADS standards. A split-access limited-use limited op- application elevator, L U L A, with an accessible entrance, a secondary accessible south entrance separated from the uh elevator, some new stairs, kitchen expansion, and stage access. The new addition will will necessitate the demolition of the existing washing um addition currently recorded, currently located at the rear elevation of the building and the upper floor emergency exit at the south elevation. In the front entrance, they're recommended to demolish the existing front entrance vestibule and replace it with a new front entrance vestibule that houses a new stairway and serves as an area of refuge. On the north emergency exit, demolish the existing uh exterior stairs and replace it with a new addition that houses a stairway that serves as an area of refuge. Alternatively, it may be feasible to eliminate the north emergency exit. Some interior renovations, which consist of kitchen renovations to address FADS deficiencies, a door replacement to meet minimum required width and include power door operators, some new signage to comply with the FADS section eleven, providing some assistive uh listening devices and a drinking fountain and water bottle filling station. On the exterior, um improvements would consist of providing a design path to the rear exit, including ramp to rear exit landing, providing an accessible parking stalls, including pavement markings and signage, and providing an accessible picnic table located on an an accessible path surrounded by firm level service. Alternatively, picnic tables could be removed. So this is what Burnside have captured in their report for evening hall. As moving forward, on the top part here, we've identified all the possible options that could be considered um for every for each hall. Again, we've captured approximately thirteen or fourteen of them. I'll go through them very, very quickly. So I I and these are all previously mentioned in our presentation earlier. So status quo. Is that an option? Sorry, status quo is an option. No renos, no changes. Provide a lump sum of money to the board and let them do the renovations. Um is it can it be township managed and repurposed, as the mayor uh mentioned earlier? Can we just sell and transfer the building to a new incorporated board? Sell the building privately. Can we include all kitchen fire standards? So this is actually an option to add on to another option. Do the, can we renovate full FADS? Should we renovate modified FADS? Another option is renovate hybrid concept. Or demolish and just build a brand-new building. Maybe that's cheaper. Another option, have a permanent closure, mothball, as was referenced. So these are all the possible options that uh council and staff thought of. Council have decided to present the evening hall with two options. There's no preference either or. It's just, it's two options that council feels um that they're ready to to commit with the evening hall. The first one is to implement a modified FADS to the existing building. So not the full FADS, but the modified FADS. There would be a seventy-five percent contribution from Creeveview Township um and council, and they're looking for a twenty-five percent commitment from the evening hall board. Again, financing details could be determined later date. So if we use the modified FADS amount of one point two seven, which includes the twenty thousand for the kitchen fire cord renovations, would be one point two seven million. This represents seventy-five percent being nine hundred and fifty-two thousand for for the township and then looking for a commitment from the evening hall for three hundred and seventeen thousand. Like, as I mentioned, it would include kitchen renovations. Um we could investigate to perhaps install a a stairlift versus an elevator. Um this has come up for one of our other halls, um but it is noted in Burnside's report that stairlifts um are are might not be all that useful um because they're not universally accessible, since it requires key operations and it calls for someone for assistance. But maybe a stairlift could be an option, but we'd have to look into that a little deeper. There's also some concerns about cost of on of operating an elevator and have them inspected every year. And what impact will those costs have on the hall board's budget? Um and then um and also, uh council discussed um that the twenty fifteen, uh there's a twenty fifteen, there's a side renovation option uh back in twenty fifteen that Burnside's provided. Yeah, it may be a cheaper option. Um I think I'll let Council Leishman uh talk about that a little later, um with a larger kitchen. Uh and it may not require um septic system renovations or up or upgrades. So that's the first option uh that council wanted to propose to the evening hall. The second option, um which was touched on by Deputy Mayor Burton, um is to sell the building to a new incorporated board uh for the evening hall. They would sell the land in the building to the new incorporated board for a dollar. Uh there would be continued support from Creeveview Township, uh snow removal and basic services uh to be negotiated and and help with insurance costs, uh some tax, some taxes through the community assistance grant program that the Creeveview has in place, uh provides some proportionate funds uh from the reserve, um and perhaps assists with the legal expenses. Um council's anticipating a twelve to twenty-four month improvement implementation timeframe uh to incorporate and get the business, the new business established. Um could update the kitchen to fire code uh from the existing reserve funds. If it's sold within a certain timeframe, say up to ten years, the township would have the first right of refusal. If the new incorporated board wanted to in turn sell the building. And as mentioned in earlier slides, it might be cheaper for a new incorporated board to complete the renovations. As they would have a different procurement process than the township tender. So these are two options that in essence council wanted to put on the table for the evening hall board to consider. You'll see on the left side is council's option info. On the right side is evening hall board. So if Bill, if you if you like, you can provide some feedback and and options this evening. Or if you, you know, if you prefer, you can have another meeting and discuss it and come back. But we're open at this time and talking some of your thoughts, some of your ideas on these two options, or even there's other. Maybe there's another option that hasn't been thought of that perhaps the evening hall board would want to provide counsel. And so, yeah, so that's that's all that we have for our presentation today. I'll just stop sharing again because I cannot see you all. I could bring that slide back up. At any point in time or any other slides, again, if you felt any other questions or concerns. But yeah, at this point, we're the floor is back to you, Bill, and if you want to provide some feedback and let us know what you think.
I guess I'll open it to. To folks from Hallboard members, thoughts? Questions for Terry or council, I suppose? Oh, come on.
Go ahead. Okay, I have, okay, go ahead, Laurie, sorry. The the option for the partial funding or seventy five percent, I believe the phrase was contribution. So is that an? A loan, is that a a full a grant from the township? What is that to be repaid? What what does that contribution look like?
Yeah, who that was Laurie?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, oh, there you are. Yeah, so, yeah, so again, it hasn't been really determined. Council's open to any of the options that you mentioned. It could be a grant, could be a loan, it could be financed over, you know, so many years. It's to be quote unquote negotiated and figured out, but they haven't gotten to those details yet. Just putting that option on the table.
I I think that makes a really big difference with how we would, you know, if if we would consider that often, whether we get. You know, that has to be paid back or not, that that makes a big difference.
Oh, I think I, sorry, I think I might have misunderstood, Laurie. Yeah, I think council's anticipating in financing that amount for the hall board. They're not expecting. The evening hall to put three hundred thousand dollars on the table right away.
No, sorry, that nine hundred and fifty thousand or whatever that first figure was, that that's given to the hall board and not expected to be paid back?
Oh, sorry, yeah, again, no, so the whole, so the whole amount, the one point two million. Would be, you know, council would pay for the whole amount. They would finance their portion, or they would figure out the nine hundred thousand, council would figure that out. On how they would pay for that, and then they would expect the evening hall to pay their portion back. So so if you know, the one point two million dollars would not be provided to the evening hall board?
No, I I understand.
Township township would pay for the renovations.
Township would would contract the project.
But is the hall board only expected to raise three hundred and twenty seven thousand in total? We would not have to pay anything. Towards the remaining one point two million.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that is correct.
Great.
I apologize, Laurie, if I did ever misunderstood. But it's a very good question, very good question.
Go ahead, Monica.
You sure, Doug? I was just wondering if if partnerships or approaching larger companies about. Especially the kitchen materials like and and. If that has been thought of, like approaching a larger business to donate the materials and then putting their name on it or something, you know. Like something to lower the cost that way when it comes to approaching businesses that might be able to help that way.
Yeah, I can answer that. I mean, you know, that would be a part of the hall board's fundraising efforts, you know, if if you're gonna. Commit to the three hundred thousand dollars and yeah, that could be part of, you know, your fundraising efforts. Sounds like a very good idea. But yeah, it hasn't been explored from a township's perspective at this point. But it could be an option, for sure.
What are the, like you had mentioned in your in your presentation too about how. It might be, you know, there there are processes, I guess, in in place for for contracting and and. And procurement and things like that. And what would be, you know, like in the case of like Monica's talking, like I. I'm assuming Monica, if I can, if I'm interpreting what you're asking, like, we would go and ask, I don't know, you know. Stevens Fuels to donate the appliances, for example, and just we put a plaque up. Is that that's kind of what you're saying, right? So I, great, I'm wondering, Terry, about like if we had a. If we had a local business who was willing to to donate services as part of as part of. Contracting renovation, that sort of thing. What's the, what would the township? What's the, what's the the township's stance on that? And and if, so if we could. If we were able to, I guess the second part to that, if we were able to get the septic system donated at cost. To to have it put in at cost, a new septic system, for example. And it reduced the overall budget by fifty thousand dollars. Would that reduce? Would that allow us to put more that fifty thousand dollar commitment that's been already made towards, you know, I don't know, whatever else at the hall?
Yeah, I think if I understand your question correctly, Bill, yeah, so somebody was to donate funds towards the project. You know, again, we're really getting into the weeds of, you know, how to fundraise and how to pay for some of the items. But from a procurement perspective, Bill, you know, the municipality, if it goes through a tender process, it has. You know, strict rules with respect to how it produces its tenders and and how do contractors bid on those tenders. I'll be really honest, the municipality doesn't have much flexibility when it comes to that, but.
I was thinking more about like donation of labor. Like sometimes, you know, you get you get friendly businesses, for example, that, you know, might be willing to help out because it's the evening hall, for example. I got a couple of folks with hands up too. I don't know if you wanted to just sort of respond to that quickly, though.
I think Mayor Measures seems to maybe might have an answer for that one, but I could also add a drone.
Sure, Bill, I just wanted to support what Terry's seeing. You know, certainly we have to engage contractors and and open a bid process. And tendering is, there's specific rules about that that are governed by Ontario rules, actually, and so we have to abide by. One of the big challenges that we face and and this township dealt with this this concern about volunteer labor or donated time. When we were faced with the renovation of the Sunnydale branch of the library. There we had a beautiful old building, if you recall, that we engaged a contractor to. To renovate, make into our new library in in New Lowell. But the community had a lot of volunteer effort and volunteer ability to contribute. And it just couldn't happen. We just could not have the work site set up with. Volunteers working while there are contractors, professionals who have to follow their workplace safety rules as well, and so. It became very problematic, but very clear, very quickly, that we can't have those two things working together at the same time. So you're gonna find, you know, a very special contractor and someone who is willing to take on that volunteer type labor in Ontario. That's that's so, so rare, I don't even think it's possible. So. You know, Terry, in his experience, you know, he, well, it wasn't his project. The building of the library next to the Stainer Arena was right next door to his office. And, you know, here's Terry, a senior manager, who also didn't have access to the job site. Because, you know, they couldn't allow him on the job site. Against the contractors just couldn't do it. And so it was difficult at times, you know, to. You know, to 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 have a good understanding about what those contractors are doing. And so we have to put a lot of faith in it. That's why the contracts have meetings and so on, so. I see this project moving ahead. If we if we go ahead and take that option as as it was asked. You know, to to do a a funding model of a twenty five percent from a fundraising effort from the hall boards. Where you guys, you know, make a commitment, it would still be all managed by one RFP or one contractor in the end, and so. It'd be very difficult to have any of that participate. Sorry, I'm a little long-winded, sorry.
If if I could add just very quickly to Mayor Measures' comments is, also, all our projects are insured. By our insurance company, and those insurance companies do not provide much flexibility towards ensuring. You know, volunteer contributions to projects. Because they have to be reassured that the projects are done as per the as per the specs that were designed, so again, from a liability perspective. Monica or or Bill, whoever answered the question, it's very rarely do the insurance give you that flexibility.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Is that more towards labor than than supplies or is that gonna be, are supplies included in materials in the RFP?
Both.
Meet standards as well? Okay, yeah.
Both, yeah.
Great, Council Leishman had a card up, and then I'll go to you, John, Council Leishman.
I was, I was just, I'm not sure actually that the septic system is included in that one point two million bill. I don't.
Oh, I was just throwing it out there as a, I was just throwing it out as a, for example.
It will be a cost on top of what of the one point two. And also council has not decided whether we're going to pay for the the kitchen upgrades or not yet. For the fire ability, I, you know, it hasn't really, it hasn't been decided. It was just an option that was put out there. So I guess we have to figure out how much it's gonna cost for the kitchens and then go from there. But I would think the fire upgrade. Could possibly be covered by council and then the rest of the kitchen upgrades would be covered by the hall. That's sort of what I would lean towards if I was going to vote on it. So just giving you a bit of an idea.
Based on the, based on the proposed, yeah, based on the proposed suggestion. Of renovating east, that's where the septic system is, like it's it's. Very close to the to the footprint of the existing hall, so I would say that, you know, if. And and it was in our, it was in our twenty fifteen documents, and it was in the twenty fifteen tender that went out. The package that went up to tender, the replacement of the septic system. We need to replace the septic system, quite frankly, at evening hall. It's not really, it's it's not really negotiable, I don't think. And and especially if you start putting a shovel into the ground, east of that hall, you're you're. You're gonna get into a mess pretty quickly, so it it will become necessary. But anyhow, we're getting into the, my new shove, and Council Lemurs had a hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, with what you're talking to and Monica's talking about. That's private enterprise. You can go out and get individual contracts and volunteer work and everything else. Municipal contracts, it's all or nothing. So that's the big difference is if if you want to take over the hall, you can do what. Basically what you want following the guidelines, get involved.
No, I just, that's, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we have a clear understanding there, like if we if we go and ask. Individuals or businesses to donate, we say, you know, it's gonna cost us X number of dollars to put in this washroom or this. This piece of appliance, whatever, new bowling lanes, I don't know, for example. And then we could put a plaque up that said this was donated by company ABC, that to get their get their donation is one thing, but yeah. Yeah, I kind of figured, I kind of figured I knew the answer, but anyhow, just so we're clear.
Again, part of your fundraising efforts, Bill, I don't want to, I don't want to discourage, you know, the evening hall board. If you were to fundraise. And ask for businesses and they would donate funds and they get a tax receipt back, that would be part of your fundraising efforts. That's still allowed. But just we couldn't accept in-kind donations as per the construction.
Right, okay, and Claire?
So the the cost that you gave Terry. Was that was pre-COVID pricing, right? So. So if there is a forty or forty four percent or whatever. Increase to building materials, all of that sort of thing, that just puts another, like, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill on. The hall. But the township's money would stay the same. It would not increase the forty four percent. Am I wording that properly?
I I think I understand your correction, your question, yeah, so like, so we've did some estimates. I think we used one point two million dollars as a as a FADS number. You know, as as a modified FADS number, but yeah, let's say we go out for tender and we find out that. COVID has had a significant impact on the construction industry and the prices actually come in at one point eight. Yes, you know, now what? We're, we have a shortfall of another, you know, two, three, four, six hundred thousand dollars. It's a hard question to answer upfront, Claire, it's a very good question, but it's hard to give an answer because we don't know. How much are we talking about? If we're talking six hundred thousand dollars, there's some major decisions that have to be made by both council and the hall board. If we're talking sixty thousand dollars, then maybe it's something that could be manageable and financed over over time. So it's hard for me to give you an answer, what would happen if it's a significant increase? You just have to go back to the table and you have to figure it out at that point, if that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
A very good question. Nice to see you.
Other comments and questions? Karen?
Hi, Karen.
Um, I don't know, I guess I have a comment. Overall, I'm just, I'm really encouraged to see. Option A, given the first half of the presentation was very bleak. I know the council has a lot to contend with, that I I guess there's a sense of relief there that that. That option's even on the table. I don't know how everyone feels about option A versus option B, but I don't know, I don't think this board has ever. Been afraid of a fundraising challenge, and I know we were willing to fundraise our first go around at this and make a committee, so. I'd certainly be on board to extend a fundraising commitment again, yeah, for the board.
Uh, Sarah?
I I just kind of like to second what Karen said. I am really thankful to the to the staff and to council for. For bringing forward such a wonderful option for us.
Great. Okay, other other comments or questions? I think I think it's worth, it's worth having a brief discussion. I I think it will be brief. About option one versus option two, I I think I know where kind of our board stands on. On operating it as a not-for-profit association or some kind of a, some kind of an entity outside of the township. We we have had discussions like this in the past. I would, I would just am interested to hear. People's, people's evening hall board members' opinions on operating. As an entity outside of the township where the the hall would be sold to. Some kind of a management board, friends of evening hall board, something like this. Yes or no? Good idea, bad idea?
Do you want to run into that with no measures? It's more of a council question.
Bill, you're looking for input from your hall board members?
Yes, well, I thought that's what Terry was, I thought that's what Terry and council were looking for out of this. Am I mistaken?
Terry, can you clarify what option one and option two is, so we don't get them mixed up? Please clarify option one, option.
Mayor Measures, his mic, your microphone was cutting out a little bit there. I'm not sure.
So.
You started to say something.
I'm sorry about that. So I'll put it back on the screen, give me a second. So option one, let's call it option one, is implement modified FADS. And let's call it option two, which is sell a building to a new incorporated board.
Right.
Yeah, we really didn't give it any numbers, but yeah, good point. Option one, modified FADS, option two.
And Bill?
Yeah, please.
I'll get in here a little closer. So about option two. Counsel had quite a good discussion about it, and to be fair, we wanted to make sure that. Um, and to be fair, we wanted to make sure that, um, this was not just simply like, okay, here you go, in 30 days, you own the building. Uh, you know, option two is presented in, in the fact that it could take up to 24 months. To establish a legal entity to get the proper registrations in place to formulate a proper. Uh, uh, understanding or contract between the municipality and, uh, and a separate independent board. Uh, so that services that Terry outlined, that the municipality offers such as snow plowing and. You know, that type of stuff, we could work out a, uh, an agreement that would then allow. The title and registration to separate from the community, therefore that separates. Uh, or relieves the responsibility that we have, as we just talked about, about tendering. Contractors and work and, and so on, it, it takes away that, that restriction. That the corporation of Clearview has to follow because we're a public entity and we have to hire and, and do our, our due diligence when it comes to RFPs. So if you do this on your own, if it becomes your own, you have that ability and you have the ability to draw upon the resources of your volunteers, your friends. Your community, um, and also get a better price. And I know, Bill, you're a former mariner, or if you still own a boat or not, I always like to use the example that. You know, if you want to buy a battery for your car, a battery for a boat, the same battery, as soon as you put the word marine on it, it costs about 15% more. So it's not so different when it comes to municipalities, you know, private versus municipality. Inevitably, it always costs more, doesn't it, at a municipality? So I, I'm just pointing that out. So I, I would hope that they, you consider that when you guys have your deliberations and have your talk about what option really works. And keep that in mind that, uh, it's, uh, it's put on the table so that you and your board can consider that. And, and look and, and honestly, answer some of the thought bubble questions about the future of the hall, what's it going to look like? You know, what's it going to look like in 30 years and who's going to be using it and running it, so, okay?
Okay. Um. Great, so, uh. Anyways, evening, evening hall board, I think, uh, do you want to, do we want to weigh in on this or you want to have a, a, a? Bigger discussion, I, again, I, I feel like I know the answer to this question, but.
So if I could just say something, Bill.
Please.
With option two. It would be a lot more involved for the hall board. Um, because you'd have us, you, you'd have to have an accountant to do, um, bookwork for an incorporation. I would assume, and especially a not-for-profit, that costs huge amounts of money. Um, I don't think we would have the support from the township for things like that. Um. So there's my two cents about that.
Karen, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so, um. I guess I'm understanding it that option two would have to be. Um. You know, more valuable than what's being asked of us for option A, which is. You know, $300,000 worth of fundraising, give or take. And, um, I, I guess it's tempting to think. Uh, you know, we could tackle this project and, you know, not being bound by the procurement by law, you know, get some better rates, but. I, I, I just, I have trouble seeing all the other, you know, longer-term requirements and. Um, you know, and expertise that would have to bring to the table, I, I just, I can't see that being substantially. A, a, a better scenario than fundraising that $300,000, which we. I mean, and that is our expertise, that we.
I agree, yeah.
Especially when we have 75,000 in the bank, uh, Sarah.
I, I'm with Claire and Karen. I, I really appreciate, especially in the last couple of years, the support that we've received. And the modifications that Clearview's made to help support its community boards. I think for the long-term health of the board, um, sticking with. And partnering and working as hard and as well as we can with Clearview is definitely, um, the option that I think is, is in the community's interest.
Melanie, did you want to chime in?
Uh, sure, I like option A, I think we're great at fundraising, I. And, and who's to say an option two, where, who's going to be running the board in 10 to 15 years from now? If we buy it, right, like? I'm just saying, like, you know, we don't know what the future holds basically for if we go as an individual thing.
Well, we always say we breed our board members and some of us, some of us might not be, some of us might not have those options anymore. Monica, did you want to say something?
I, I support option A as well, I'm behind everything that's being said by Sarah, Karen, Melanie, Claire. I definitely agree.
Oh, Claire, you're, uh, you're not muted there. Say hi to Tom for us.
What does he think, Claire?
Yeah.
As a man who's bred a few future board members, I think he should have a say in this.
Uh, did you want to, go ahead, Laurie, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm, 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 I'm still not 100% sure on option A, I think that's an awful lot of money. To raise even, even at the 325, let alone plus 44%. So I'm not saying I'm for option A, but I'm definitely not for option B.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, uh, Claire, did you want to add something?
No.
Okay. All right, I think we've heard from all the hall board members, so if, I, I mean. That's pretty unanimous, um, in terms of where, where we're at, and like I said, I kind of think I knew the answer to that. But just so that everyone is clear, staff and council as to our, our commitment, um. You know, we had, as a board, um, we had a, we had a, we have. Made a, made a pretty significant, um, have done a pretty significant, um, fundraising campaign back when. This all began 10 years ago, um, you know, we wrote a couple of checks to the township to pay for 50% of the renovations. Which were $150,000 total, um, back, you know, in 2014, I think that was, we, the last check cleared. And, and now our, our bank account is back up to, to those levels, so I think, and, and that's without doing a really concerted, um, fundraising campaign. Um, and I, you know, we do have some other, um, some other community members who have, who have also expressed an interest to be part of a fundraising campaign and committee. Um, outside of this board, um, as well, so. Um, and I think like anything, um, when you have a plan for something. And you can present that plan to people and they can see, oh yes, I'm going to be contributing to this vision or this thing. Then, then it's a lot easier to, to get, uh, to, to ask, first to go out and ask for money, but also to, to get people to, to donate to that. Um. Yeah, and I guess, yeah, okay, um, all right, so what else do you need from us at this point?
Yeah, so thanks, Bill, so the next, so my team in the background here, we've been capturing all the, all the feedback and all the, the notes and. Um, our next steps is for my department to bring back a report to council, um, share with them, um, what has been discussed today. Um, you know, brief counsel on, on the feedback and your preferred option, your preferred, preferred choices. Um, and then, you know, council will make, uh, final decisions at that point. You know, they, again, um, we're going to be, bring back all the six halls, uh, reports back to them. I anticipate council will make a decision once they get, hear back from all six halls. Because as you see in the presentation, you know, there's, um, they're looking at this from, from all six halls perspective and they have to make a decision. Uh, that will obviously impact all six halls, um, so we're hoping to bring that back sometime in May. Um, some other halls, like Dantune as an example, a couple of nights ago, uh, they didn't give us a Nancy Waiter rate, they wanted to think about it and get back to us. Um, so they're taking a little bit more time, uh, to, to decide their options, um, but eventually I'll have all six options. And, um, we'll, we'll bring back individual reports for council and then the council will hopefully make some final decisions. Um, and then, um, we'll report those back to the hall boards and then hopefully we can. Start planning the next steps.
Great, just with regards to, you know, um. Uh, the next steps as well, like, like I, I would, um. I, I'm sure it's probably hard for you to imagine, but I have some, and I, I know other council members or other board members too have some pretty strong opinions about, uh. About, uh, the, uh, the renovation, the proposed renovation and some ideas, um, and, um. Where would we be and how would we be involved in that process? I don't, I know that I'm, well, I'm, I'm fairly confident that our board, um, would not want to say, okay, yeah, we're willing to get, you know. To, to, to be part of this process and then, you know, not, not be involved in the development of that. Um, and, and, and the development of those, of those plans, I know that, um, the last time we went, we did this, um. There was a very extensive community process that was, that was, um, done as part of it as well, and we would like to probably, um. Do something similar or at least, uh, at least, yeah, so anyways, I think you.
Yeah, my question. So, I mean, that'll, for us, that'll be a direction from council, council, you know, they will decide, I had a slide up there on, you know, what is, what does the construction look like? Who does what, you know, who makes sure that, you know, um, things are done according to plan and then what is that planning process? Um, that will be the direction from council. Um, but if you don't mind, Bill, if you could, uh, send me a, a bit of an email just to capture your thoughts. And how you envision, you know, being part of that planning process, uh, with, with respect to the, you know, doing the modified FADS. So we can capture that in my reports, I can capture that, so I can communicate that back to council, um, your thoughts around that. Um, I don't think we've really had, you know, we as staff, um, have, haven't really thought about that yet. Um, but I'm pretty sure we would look at getting, you know, the hall boards involved in a final design. Um, and getting into those weeds to really figure out, you know, who, you know, what needs to be done and. Are there any additional wish lists, the septic system isn't, everyone needs to be talked about, the kitchen, uh, fire kitchen code, so. Um, but again, that would be something that council will, will direct staff to, to do at that point in time. But please share your thoughts, um, via email on how you want to be part of that process.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Um, Sarah, sure, Sarah, go ahead.
Um, I, I think it's important to like, address Laurie's concerns around money and maybe a few other things as a board. Before we kind of give our absolute comment, is there time for us to go back and have kind of another meeting? And do a little bit of soul searching and then send comment to council, Bill, is that how you're seeing this roll out?
That's a good idea.
I, I, I figured we wouldn't just, this wouldn't be the end of it.
Okay, good, good, good.
We would probably have to have some kind of a resolution, um, and, uh, and, and probably, you know, like, like, uh. Come up with our commitment, um, as a board and, uh, and, um. And I think that, I think too, um. That there probably are some pretty strong feelings about, um, about a potential renovation and, and a potential design for renovation. With regards to the evening hall, um, from this board and from the board members that they would like to be. Definitely be a part of that process, so I, I think that, yeah, we, we're. You know, well, option one is definite, with, without a doubt, our preferred option, um, the details of that. Uh, remain to be set. And probably it won't get done next week at our AGM, um, so potentially we need to set a date for that. With that as kind of our sole discussion item, um, after the, sometime after the AGM.
Because not only are we making this decision for, um, for the community now, we're making this decision for the community for the long term. And I think it's important that, that we think about that and we really kind of chart that.
Yep, uh, Mayor Measures.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Again, this is, uh, this has been really good, I, I really appreciate hearing from your board members and, uh. Uh, I, I'm, I'm glad that, uh, that you're, you're heading in the right direction to have further discussions. About what this is actually going to look like, and I support what Laurie was saying, she wants to know how much that really is. And to be honest, uh, we all need to know, uh, what it's going to cost, particularly when, uh. This hall and, and, uh, was brought up, you brought it up yourself too, Bill, about the fact that there's some septic concern, maybe even waterline concern. So there's some items that, if we're going to be renovating, we're going to have to have a full scope of work. But then, you know, when the building's completed, we can operate the building, right? So, so we're going to have to have a, a discussion about the whole scope of work as well as meeting all the AODA requirements. And so that, uh, we're going to get to that, I would suggest that you want to get back to Terry. Who can then prepare his report, but then gives council an idea as to what direction, uh, this board wants to go. Uh, getting into the full design, you know, picking out the windows or whatever, whatever, whatever you need to do, that. That is yet to come, but let's just say that, um. You know, council needs to know the, the wishes of this board. And then council will then consider the reports, we're all six boards, and how we will, uh, address each one of the. Asks and needs for the community and, um, keep in mind the amount of debt load that the entire community can handle. So we have to, we have to, we have to be respectful of that and respectful of taxpayers, so. Um, this is very helpful and, uh, you know, I think that's, it'll set the, set the path forward for what the evening hall. Uh, will look like in the next 35 years or so, and so that's, that's a real positive thing that you guys are doing, so. Please get back to Terry and, uh, that will be very helpful for him and his staff to prepare that report. And you can appreciate, we have other volunteers across this beautiful Clearview that are going to be doing similar work that you guys are doing, so, thank you.
Uh, Monica and then, uh, Counsel Lemers.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to speak to, um, you had noted on there, um, fundraising fatigue. And I think the, in regards to the whole community, of course, we want to approach our community and the Clearview first, but I think. I mean, I want to speak to our board members, but I think as a board, we kind of have a little bit more reach outside of. Just Clearview as well, which I find, uh, encouraging and hopeful, and I think other boards would have that too, but. Um, I just wanted to kind of point that out, that the, the fatigue might not be as awful as we might anticipate.
Great, uh, John.
Thank you, Bill, um, can we add this to Thursday night's agenda to set up a date for? A follow-up meeting? Just for, to discuss this on the following week?
Yeah, I was, I was, I was wondering if we should set the, set the date, like, in a moment here when we're, when we're through with, uh, with this business.
I think we can send it or set it on Thursday next, we have a meeting.
Okay.
At council there, or, uh, hall board there.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any other thoughts, uh? Here, any other thoughts?
Not right now.
Okay. Okay, um, so with that, oh, let me get back to my agenda. All right, yeah, go ahead, Terry.
I just one final thought, if I may, I just want to thank.
Please.
The, the evening hall for allowing me to make the presentation this evening, um, like, like I mentioned to the Dantune Hall. Um, make, doing these presentations over Zoom is extremely difficult, I appreciate your patience. Um, especially I had some technical difficulties tonight, I was, it was really weird, I was making a presentation to myself, it felt like. Um, but again, I appreciate your patience, um, and again, I, I thank you for allowing me to make a presentation.
Thank you, Terry.
Thanks, Terry. All right, I'm happy to commiserate with you about Zoom and, and virtual lessons at any time. Anyhow, okay, uh. Okay, just sorry, I was just seeing if there was something popped up in the chat, it's okay, good. Um, so yes, our next meeting is our AGM Thursday, March 25th, one week from tonight, um, 7:30 PM. Do we, evening hall board, do we want to set a, um, do we want to set a meeting date for a follow-up to this meeting specifically? For the, the near future after that?
Yes.
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 What date do we want?
Why not do it the week after the AGM?
April Fool's Day, it's the week, it's the night before, um, the night before the long weekend, the Easter weekend, no.
Okay, I don't have a calendar, sorry.
How about the 8th, which would be two weeks, um, after the AGM, April the 8th, Thursday the 8th?
That'll work for me, yeah.
Yeah, that would work.
Great, oh, I got a thumbs up from Karen. Laurie, is that good for you? Sarah says yes. Claire, does the 8th of April work for you?
I won't know until the Friday before that, but.
Okay.
Go for it.
Lori?
I couldn't get my hand up. Um, I can make it, I might be late, but I can make it.
Okay, all right, well, let's set that as a, let's set that then as a as a follow-up to this meeting. We'll, it'll be kind of a single agenda item meeting and um and we'll talk. We'll get into the weeds at that meeting, since the weeds will be coming in early April.
Yay!
Just in time, okay. Any uh, any, any other comments before we adjourn? Oh, Lori, go ahead. Or were you moving to adjourn?
No, no, not yet. I was just gonna thank Terry. That was a really detailed presentation, uh, really, really detailed, and I know that's. So thank you, that was really good.
Um, yeah, great, thank you. Uh, and can we um get some of the details? Um, the for those uh for that option and and some of those sorts of things for our meeting on the eighth and I can work with with uh. With Kayla for that or with you or whichever is is more appropriate.
Yeah, I'll definitely share my my presentation as well.
Okay, great. Excellent. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. I need to move her in a second or two. Adjourn, Karen, she, you beat Melanie, great, and Melanie will get you seconding the.
Yay!
Motion to adjourn. Thanks, everybody.